As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in your name we pray. Amen. All right, do we have any adjustments of the agenda?
We do, Your Honor. I'm asking that we add under the consent agenda, Resolution Number 2021-07, there is a copy at each council member seat, and it is simply a resolution to adopt our hazard mitigation plan, which we do every five years.
Any questions or comments from council for that? Are we good to leave that on the agenda? Okay.
Thank you.
And that's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that being said, then, we'll move on to your consent agenda.
Move, we approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries. All right, up next is the Development Agreements informational update.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have two relatively large development agreements coming before you over the next month, and I've asked both attorneys, each attorney representing our interest in that, to come forward and give you just a little primer on development agreements, because I know it's been a while since you've seen many, and I think that'll give us some time over the next couple of weeks or month for you guys to ask questions about what you may see as these documents come to you. They will be pretty lengthy documents with a lot of meat in them, so I just, this is just a way to let you see the attorneys, ask them questions, and then get us, make sure we're ready for you when we come back. So with that, Russell, you and...
You first.
Okay, Russell, we're gonna lead it.
Hey, good evening. Chad and I are gonna split this up. I'm Russell Killen, I'm with Parker Poe, and just to give you a little bit of background on me, I've sat in just about every chair in this room. I spent four years on the town council in Idale, eight years as mayor, have worked on the town attorney side on interim basis, and have known J.D. for a long time, so I appreciate y'all letting me come up here tonight. And this is, again, just to kind of kickstart things with all you have going on and all the development agreements you got coming down the pipe, J.D. thought this would be useful, and I think it'll be helpful to you, and so we'll go. If you have any questions, I'll do half, Chad will do half, stop, be the one of us, and ask us. If not, we'll be back later with documents that I am sure you will have questions about, and we can talk about it longer then. All right, this is just to kind of run you through what we're gonna go tonight. I won't read it all to you, but essentially, to talk about development agreements, why you do it, and really a focus on the town side, like, what's the benefit to you as a town of doing these? What are the things you should be thinking about when you're approaching it? What's kind of the legal structure around it? Simply put, it's a contract between the local government and a developer, and, you know, the big thing for me, having done a bunch of these, is the ability to have an open and honest conversation. So many times, when you have a developer coming in town, they're trying to work around the ordinances, and it's a funny dance, you know? You're kind of talking, and they're kind of talking, and you kind of think you know what you're gonna get, and then you get halfway through that development, and you go, that's not at all what I thought I was gonna get, and that's, you know, that's where you don't want to be. And so by taking the time to negotiate the contract upfront, you eliminate a lot of those uncertainties, and you're really doing it like you would a private deal, which is beneficial in many ways. Specifically about, you know, the benefits for the town, the flexibility, when we say innovative approach, what that really means is you're not bound by the exact letter of your ordinance. So there are ways, if your ordinance doesn't fit a development, if you've got a mixed use, if you've got an unusual use, if you've got things you need to adjust, the benefit of the development agreement is you can do that and address it through that process, and that is very helpful. Certainty, you're gonna hear that from both the town and the developer, it's nice to know exactly what you're getting. Again, not that funny dance about, I think I know what you're gonna do, and you've shown me some pretty pictures and some drawings, let's really get down to the nitty-gritty, and that nitty-gritty is the next point, which is infrastructure. You know, how are you gonna coordinate, especially with a big gateway kind of private development, what you're gonna have from water, sewer, roads, you know, bicycles, greenways, with what the town wants and what the developer wants, and being able to say, okay, this is exactly what we want, this is exactly how we'll do it, and here's what we'll pay for our share, really makes it easier to move forward with these things in a way that gives you and the citizens what they're looking for. Next one, you know, when to avoid a development agreement? Well, usually when it's easy. So if it's not complicated, if it's something where, okay, we've done 100 of these, it's a residential subdivision, there's nothing special, we're gonna come in and let you do it, you don't really need it if your ordinance addresses it adequately. The other thing that I always tell people to work, look out for, is when you're talking with that developer, if they want a development agreement, but they can't really articulate to you what they're looking for, yeah, you know, it might not be fully cooked for them, and you might not get what you want there, and that might be a process where you're spending a lot of time and staff effort and money, and, and they're not really ready for it, so that's probably not what you want to do. All right, town goals, this is the part I really wanted to talk a little bit about. So, you know, for the town, why do these? And I think if you look around, you know, mostly the metropolitan areas, why you see more and more municipalities doing these, is to get quality development. You have a vision for your town that you know what you want, and again, especially when you're talking about gateway areas or major developments or things that are, you're gonna, you know, are gonna really change what's going on in Clayton, you know what you want, and you want to be able to talk with the developer about that, understand what they're looking for in return, and make sure you can get that quality growth and development in a way that you're gonna feel good about it when you go back to your citizens and say, look, this is how this came about. Phasing, you know, handling the growth in the right phases, making sure you've got the infrastructure available, making sure it all works, so the roads and the water and the sewer all comes online at the same time the developer's ready to build, you can spell that out. You can have the schedule established, and those kind of things are really helpful, and you'll see those as we start going through the development agreements. For the developer, it's lots of the same stuff, it's certainty, it's vested rights, and so by that, they get a certain period where they're guaranteed to be able to build this, which is good, again, because it gives them the certainty, but back to that phasing and schedule, you also have the ability to say, okay, yeah, we think it makes sense for this to be built out every eight years, and let's talk about how that needs to look, and again, how we'll coordinate our infrastructure to meet the needs as the development goes along. It gives them some design flexibility, it gives them the ability to do things. Again, if you've got an ordinance, you know, no municipality updates their ordinance all the time, and so as things come through, there may be opportunities and things you didn't think about that don't really fit into your ordinance, and you go, I want that, the community wants that, this would be really good, and a development agreement, it gives you a chance to address those things. Again, understanding the money and the public infrastructure commitments, that's always an important part of it, it's not really the fun part of it, but it's a critical part of it for the town. Process, this is just the process for you going through it. It is a legislative process, not a quasi-judicial process, which is a good thing. Again, open, honest, clear communication with the decision maker, that leads to a good result and a good development. You get plenty of public notice, you get plenty of public feedback, you know, there's a chance for people to be heard and for you to adjust and make sure you're getting the public what they want, you know, planning board review, all that kind of stuff, but really, the best part of the process for me is that it takes a while, and I know you want to rush it along, but again, I've done a bunch of these, taking the time to get it right, and you understanding what you're asking for, and them understanding what you want, and then you having something, you go, well, maybe it's not perfect, but this is really good, and you feel good about that and confident about that, that part of the process is really good, and ultimately, you'll get the public input, and you'll get to vote on it, and it'll be done. So that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts. I think that's my last slide. Yep, so I'll turn it over to Chad.
You guys have been familiar with Russell from the past, but Chad Essex is a new guy, and interesting to you guys from Porter Spruill, so introduce you to everybody, and he and Russell sit on opposite sides of that, of the coin sometimes, one represents the town and one represents the developer, and when we had the adjustment with Parker Poe, I was able to reach out to Chad and let Russell keep, keep one of the development agreements, and Chad was nice enough to step in and do the other one, so I felt like we got two of the best people in Raleigh doing major development agreements, representing us on these matters, so Chad, there's...
Well, thank you, J.D., and thank you for the con words. Again, my name's Chad Essex, I am a attorney with the law from Porter Spruill in Raleigh, I work in the same building as Russell, he's just a couple floors down from me, but I have the good fortune of working with both developers and local governments on these types of agreements, and so kind of have been on both sides of it to see kind of what drives these agreements and what are important to both sides. So I'm gonna talk for a minute about more of the nuts and bolts of the statutory requirements for development agreements under 160D, Article 10, and what you're required to have in these agreements, and then I can touch on things that may be optional or that you may choose to have in these agreements as you go through the process. So obviously, legal description, you get required to identify the property in which this development agreement is gonna cover, so in some cases, that could be a very large tract of land over a large phase, in some instances, it could be a smaller. It used to be you had to have a certain minimum acres to even do a development agreement, the General Assembly did away with that, and so now you can do a development agreement on any size parcel of land. Then you have the term of the agreement, how long is it for? The statute just says for, you know, a reasonable term, you know, typically, you'll see the terms to be, the length of time is gonna fully build out the project, and maybe a little bit of buffer time in there in case you have some unexpected things come up, but that's typically what you see as it relates to the term. Then the uses, you'll, we identify, you know, what are the development uses that we're gonna allow as a part of this development? That typically, in a lot of cases, is done through simultaneously with a planned development that may be being approved through a rezoning, and that identifies what the uses are, and then you just kind of incorporate it into the development agreement, or you may have some existing zoning in place that you want to say, we definitely don't want those uses in this zoning district, we want X, Y, and Z. And that would include also, you know, your density that you may have in certain areas of the plan, from residential or commercial square footage, or building types and intensities, and where you want them placed and designed as a part of the project. The development agreement also will require a description of public facilities that will service the, the project, and who's gonna provide them, when they're gonna be constructed, and how they're gonna be done concurrently with the impacts of the development as that development is built out over that term. You also have a description in your development agreement of any reservation or dedication of land, so in situations where the developer is dedicating right-of-way for future roads or greenway easements for, you know, future greenways, or reservation of certain areas for open space, or parks, or schools, or whatever it may be, you need to identify those lands and what is going to be dedicated for public use. You might also, if you have anything that's related to protecting environmentally sensitive areas, that would be a part of the development agreement as well. I'm working on one right now where there's a historic house that has to be relocated, and so you would have anything related to historic structures as a part of that development agreement, how's it gonna be relocated, what's gonna be done with it, who's gonna pay for it, those sorts of things. You'll have, obviously, terms and conditions relating to breach and cure, and what those look like, some of that's defined statutorily, but also, you know, having a process by which you go through if the developer doesn't live up to their end of the bargain, what is the process to get things back on track, hopefully without, you know, litigation or something ensuing. And then, I think Russell talked about it, development schedule, so your phasing of this project, and what does that look like? Because that's important to the town, and I'll talk about it in a minute, as it relates to things like wastewater allocation and things that, when is this stuff coming online, and what do we have to commit to now, or five years from now, or 10 years from now? Some of the things that, that, um, may not be statutorily required, but maybe some optional provisions that you may have in a development agreement, you know, certain hard completion deadlines for certain things, certain performance standards you want to put on the developer that's gonna be reviewed annually, there may be some mutually consented to impact mitigation measures that may go beyond what the town may have authority to do, for things like, I don't know, off-site road improvements or infrastructure, but that the parties have agreed to for whatever reason. There may be conditions related to financing, if the local government needs to finance, you know, some public infrastructure project that they've committed to, saying, you know, this is contingent upon that financing being put in place, and then cost-sharing agreements between the town and developer on who's gonna, who's gonna pay for what, and how, how that, how that's gonna be done. You may have a separate agreement related to cost sharing. You'll typically see in a lot of development agreements, there's a fair number of exhibits and attachments to it, oftentimes because it's just easier to incorporate those documents by reference, and there are a lot of things that have already been put together, but some of the things, I, I won't read them all there, but you, you see some of these, your agreements will have, you know, any number of these things attached to it, whether it be a TIA, traffic impact analysis, that has, here are all the road improvements that we recommend in connection with this development, and you say, we're, the developer's gonna do all of those, and you'll attach it as an exhibit, obviously, master plans or other plans and site maps you would attach to make sure it's clear what they're committing to. You may have design guidelines for certain, you know, architectural standards or things, designs that you want in relation to the development would be attached. So those, those are just a few examples of...
So they can expect a pretty big package when they see their agenda item, when Blooming comes in, right?
Yeah, I have it over there in the folder, and at least the one I'm working on is about that, about that fix, so. So a few things that, you know, are prohibited, or you, you will not see in development agreements, if you're opposing any sort of taxes or impact fees that you otherwise aren't authorized to do under the law, you know, for example, building housing code exemptions, you can't say we're gonna exempt you from housing and building code requirements unless, you know, they're otherwise exempted through those codes, or, you know, saying, you know, we're gonna allow these types of zoning uses with your development, but they're not uses that are allowed either under the planned development agree, the planned development or the, the So I think, you know, the, the big thing, I think, if you take away from this, is really a, a timing is what is drives, and cost allocation are what drives these, so, you know, as Russell noted, from the developer's perspective, timing is having some certainty, when my developer clients talk about it all the time, I need some certainty that over the next 10 years, the code's not gonna change, and I'm vested, or leadership's not gonna change, or whatever the case may be, and I got some certainty on my project. I think from the town's perspective, the timing of, of when infrastructure comes online, how it's built, how it's gonna be allocated, as far as wastewater, you know, allocation, for example, the, the project that we come in before you in the couple weeks, or whenever we get, whenever we have it, is, you know, allocating wastewater over a period of time based on when that build-out's gonna be, so on day one, the town's not committing to X number of water gallons per day, when we don't know if that's gonna be ultimately what happens in the future. I mean, we hope, that's the plan, so, but that, that, that's the big thrust of a lot of these development agreements, and, you know, with that, I'm happy, Russell, if we, any questions that you may have, I'm happy, happy to answer.
Awesome. Questions or comments? Mr. Granis?
I had a couple of questions of Russell. You mentioned under benefits, the innovative approaches, and then you touched on with respect to town ordinances, could you expand on that a little bit?
So, so essentially, you know, this has the effect of an ordinance, so if your ordinance either, you know, has a specific standard or doesn't have a specific standard, you may have the ability to impose something different from your ordinance as part of this, so as part of the overall development, you can say, you know, we're accepting you out of these three things, but we're requiring these four from you in addition, so it, it gives you the flexibility, again, if your ordinance doesn't specifically meet the requirements, and this happens a lot when you're mixing uses, so if you have, you know, a, a commercial and residential aspect, and especially if you have, you know, residential over commercial, something like that, it's, you know, if your ordinance hasn't had that before, the ability to go in and maybe allow for some flexibility there on both sides to not meet the letter of your ordinance is kind of the innovative approach you get.
Okay. The other question was on the developer's side, a density bonus slash flexibility, could you expand on that a little bit?
So, it's, so let's, let's say, take infrastructure, for example, so we're asking for an investment from the town, the developer says, you know, we're, we're gonna, and they may say, well, I may build you six hundred units, and you say, well, if you're only building 600 units, we can give you this much money, but what you may also be able to say is, however, if you build us 600 units and bring us a commercial development, and you do these two other things, and so you make your units more dense, impact more into the development, the tax return to the, you know, town is much more, so we'll be able to contribute more, so there may be a sliding scale of contribution that you work on in some of those cases.
Great, thank you.
You're up.
Anyone else?
So I think some things you're gonna see in, in these two development agreements, you'll see some shared right-of-way, some shared roadway, some shared access of those things, where we're gonna have to really work on the timing of that, you're gonna see some phasing as part of that, maybe building some infrastructure prior to or after, that may get out in front of what we would normally do in a planning process, but, but, but at least one of the developers wants to go ahead and build some of that development, you're gonna see some shared infrastructure costs probably, whether it be a water tank or whatnot, you're gonna see some of those considerations playing out, and some other... You're going to see some of those considerations playing out, and some other shared infrastructure, perhaps. And probably some other things, but there'll just be some give and takes that I think both these guys have done a great job working with the developer so far with, and with our staff, to really make sure that everything's laid out as much as it can, especially with respect to timing and what we need to have as far as adequate public facilities out there before you guys can approve something. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate both of y'all coming out tonight. It's great to have you on the team, and grateful for everything you guys are doing. So thank you.
You know, I think this was great exercise and informative this evening. You know, we've always done development agreements. But it's different now, you know, because what's being looked at for development is so much more in so many, on so many different levels. So it's great to come back and have a little bit of a refresher course on how this rolls out, so we can start thinking in those terms. So I appreciate both of you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, J.D. Okay, up next is our public hearings. The first one is 2020-113 PDD Ashcroft 2.
This will be a request for continuation, I believe. Samantha, if you want to do that?
Good evening, Samantha Wilon-Waiver, Planning Director. I would like to request to continue Item A, B, and C until the February 15 Town Council meeting, please.
All right.
Several reasons for that. We wanted to make sure, one, you heard this presentation first, it had adequate time to absorb, and if you have any follow-up questions for the attorneys or anything to do with that. Second, we thought we had a pretty big agenda tonight that probably prohibited us from doing that. Third, I think the, I've been talking with the developer, we'd better, y'all be ready and focused on this thing than not. I will say, just because I need to say it, is that we need to be, we did not adopt 160D tonight, but our project manager that was working on Ashcroft has resigned, and she will be going to work for the developer at Ashcroft. And so for that reason, we did not feel comfortable tonight without a kind of an independent review to proceed on with you guys either. This was a secondary thing, but for the sake of full disclosure, we're making sure we get a little bit of distance and do a little bit of internal review to make sure there are no potential conflicts. I don't believe there's any conflicts. There's been a lot of people looking at this, a lot of people working on this for a long period of time, but we like to be, we like to be careful, too. So that's just another reason why it's better for the 15th, if you'll continue this.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to continue these three public hearings till February 15 meeting.
So move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to continue this until the February 15 meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lock, sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Longer discussion on 160D tonight, and let me tell you where we are. I know you guys saw some stuff on the agenda, the package came out, been a 330-page document, and a lot of people have some questions about how they can get through it. Where we want to go tonight is to continue this as well, instead of adopt it, if that's the wish of this council. A couple of you have reviewed this deeply, and a couple of you have also asked me to review it deeply over the weekend, and I did. And so my final opinion of this is that we're not quite ready tonight to proceed on with adoption. We need to, we met with staff today, Councilman Granis came in and met with Samantha today, and I think what we would like to do is discuss a little bit of the Board of Adjustment question about reconstituting that as an independent body, which I think I would like to do, I think we need to, the way this document's developed now. The second thing is I want to make sure, in a 330-page document, that the council has a clear understanding of the things that are required by 160D, and the things that are optional with respect to 160D, and to make sure that, regardless of how you're voting, that there's not some, something small that you think is small, or should not be, all this was part of 160D, it's not. And so there's probably two dozen places in here where we can do some things, where we're trying to do some things beyond 160D. And then the final discussion is, one, it goes back to the Board of Adjustment, is the discussion of waivers versus variances. And we heard clearly this fall that you guys prefer to keep your waiverability from the majority of this council. And so the document in many places takes away the waivers, and it goes with the variance process. There are some potential consequences to the variance, one of which we think we need to perform a Board of Adjustment to hear those. But with that said, what we would like to do after tonight is make a list of the changes and further modifications, and we'll bring that back to you on a tight piece of paper that you can fully understand what you're doing. Now, if we tried to vote it in tonight, those changes would have to be given to Kimberly, and we would have to take some time to print them out, and you guys would consider them. We don't want to rush this, it's a big document. And so that will give us some time for staff to go through the things we talked about today, and give you a list of things that'll change. You'll still probably change some things the next time we meet to approve this, but it'll be one step cleaner than what it would be if we tried to put a bunch of stuff in tonight in a hurry. We will be asking you for a special meeting or to resolve this in a couple weeks at a regular council meeting, whichever way you guys want to do it. I do believe we probably need a special meeting to do this, because we probably need to spend a couple hours with it, depending on how much we debate it tonight, Mr. Mayor. That's up to you on the agenda. But there is quite a bit of discussion we'll need to have, once you see revised documents. We did talk, Rich and Samantha and Joshua and I, about whether this need to go to the Planning Board or not, back to the Planning Board. I don't think so, but that's y'all's decision. The Planning Board has had their chance to review it, and they are the body you put in place as appointees to cut this down. I think a lot of the issues have been cut down, but there's still a lot remaining, and I think you guys are really in a position, that once you spend a little bit more time with it, you guys will be able to approve it. The last thing I'll say is both the Item D here and Item E need to be continued, because we don't need to approve Item E without approving 160D. And we will add back to the future agenda, Kimberly's prepared that and given it to you, where we reinstate the Board of Adjustment to roughly how it was before. So when we do 160D, when we do the fees, we'll also be doing the Board of Adjustment, so that we'll have all that approved at the same time, and then we can fill the Board of Adjustment thereafter. So that's a little bit of where I think we need to go in continuation, and I want to open it up to you guys. We can share some stuff, but I really, Mr. Mayor, if I could, with that introduction, to see what the council says, or any items that we need to know for staff here in the public meetings, so we can start revising or reforming it.
Okay. Any questions or comments for J.D.?
How do we start this? So we just can pick a subject and go, or?
Yes, if you like. I think we'll start that. What I've asked Samantha to do is, we do, do we have our consultant here? If we want to start with a brief overview of what this is for the public record, I think we're going to keep that to about eight or 10 slides. Then I'll let you guys kind of go around, round robin, if that's what you guys want to do, and share your general concerns. If you guys don't have general concerns, but want us to kind of map out some chapters or some articles, we'll go kind of that way. I don't think we're ready for a full-page turn tonight, but we can kind of look at some of the bigger articles if you guys, after you give us the general stuff, we'll go by section by section if you need us to. Is that okay? Okay. Let's call Stewart up to do a brief presentation, just so everybody's aware of what 160D is and where we're trying to go with this process.
Sure. Yes, sir. I'll be as brief as I possibly can, all right? To go over a 330-page document.
Me and the mayor understand that.
Understood, understood. No, I appreciate it, and it's a hard act following Russell. I've known him for quite a while, and he's a hard actor to follow, so I'll try to be very brief. So just a little bit about 160D. It's probably one of the largest overhauls of the planning and zoning enabling legislation that's been done, probably in the last couple decades. One of the main things is that it really does consolidate some of the local land use regulations where they've been spread out before. And again, this is mandatory. Everybody's going through this in the state of North Carolina. Every city and every county are going through the same process, it's not just the town of Clayton. And then the deadline for compliance is July 1. Actually became effective January 1 of this year, but you do have a deadline of July 1 to actually have it adopted. So you do have some time to work through it. So as I mentioned, it really is a consolidation of the county and municipal regulations. So right now, you've got 160A that controls all the municipal regulations, you have 153A that handles all the county regulations, so that's being merged now into Chapter 160D. And really, the next three bullets are the things that really happen with this. It clarifies all the development review processes really into three main categories, and I'll go into that in just a second of what those are. It also updates the terminology. So the definition of a special use permit, the definition of a variance, the definition of a site plan are now uniform between all towns and counties, so you don't have a different definition as you go to different jurisdictions. And then there's some restrictions on imposing conditions that aren't lawful to do. So, you know, some towns have gotten where they were imposing conditions that weren't even lawful to impose, and so it really restricts that. And then there's some standardization of some procedures that's in there. So as I mentioned, really, it creates three buckets for you to go through in the development process. One is the administrative process, and that is essentially a staff enforcement of the code. That is the process number one. Process number two is the legislative process, and that deals with policy-driven decisions, rezoning requests, text amendments, like we're talking tonight, that's a legislative process. And then the third is quasi-judicial, and that's your evidentiary hearing. It's very court-like, very legal style. You have findings of fact that the applicants have to meet in order to grant those things. So you might see a special use permit, or variance, or something along those lines. So really, one of the biggest parts of this is really focusing towns and counties to go in one of those three buckets for the development approval process. And so this kind of shows a flow chart of what a decision would be like using one of these processes. So you would start out with a development application, you would determine the process, if it was administrative, then it would be reviewed by staff. It would be a staff decision, and if there was appeal, it would go to the Board of Adjustment as an appeal. The second process is legislative, and so that's where your Planning Board would make a recommendation to the council to make a decision. The council would have a legislative hearing, which again is, you know, one of those that's policy-driven, and anybody can really come out and speak. And then the decision to appeal on those are actually, go to Superior Court. So if someone doesn't like the decision you make on a legislative decision, it goes to Johnson County Superior Court. And then the third is the quasi-judicial process, and that's an evidentiary hearing where you're sworn in, your applicants provide evidence. It can be limited to letting a neighbor speak, and people that are interested unless they apply, or they have expert testimony. So this can be a little more difficult, like your special use permits and your variances. And again, those are done by your Board of Adjustment in the variance case, and by this board as a special use permit. And if you want to appeal that, you again go to Superior Court. So really, those are the three main decision types that 160D is really working on. So there's no more special use districts, there is special use permits, but not special use districts. Conditional zoning has been clarified to where it is a purely legislative process, and conditional zoning really allows you to sort of create unique standards for that particular district, allows you to tie a site plan to it, and allows a little more give and take between the elected officials and the applicants. Again, one of the things is that there's no more, no more conditional use permits. You have special use permits. So with the Clayton ordinance right now, you have those already in place, and so those will remain. And then some of the less controversial conditional use permits will become permitted, and then some that will, that maybe require a little more scrutiny will stay as special use permits. So that won't be a whole lot of change there. And then I think some of the things that's been discussed, and I think will be discussed more, is sort of the subdivision by right, and, you know, really focusing your time and your energy on that rezoning process, and that conditional district process, and really looking at how PUDs are done, you know, and really looking a little more about how that process is done as we go forward. And again, you having clear administrative standards is, increases the predictability, lets people understand the process they have to go through. And again, as I mentioned early on, the 160D really limits the amount of conditions that you can legally apply to a project when it comes through. So kind of to wrap up, if you look at really the review processes, I talked about each process going through a certain area with zoning permit, or the administrative process would be your zoning permit, so your staff would issue those. The way it's currently worded right now would be your subdivisions and your Platts would go through your staff, administrative amendments, and traffic analysis would be staff-driven, and then site plans. Your Planning Board and your Board of Adjustment would, the Planning Board would make recommendations on rezonings, text amendments like we're hearing tonight, they actually heard the same thing about a week ago. No more conditional use permits, site plans would be done by staff, your variances would be heard by your Board of Adjustment, and administrative appeals would be by Board of Adjustment. And in this board, the council would make decisions on conventional and conditional district zonings, rezonings, ordinance amendments, like, again, like we're doing tonight, and then special use permits. And so that's about as quick as I can go.
Good.
You know, and, you know, there's a lot more to this. You know, doing these amendments is one of those things where we're helping communities all across the state, and again, y'all are not the only ones dealing with this, but it is one of those things where you change one thing. I call it like the domino effect. If you make one change, it can, you know, change other parts. So you, it's very important to be very thorough and go through each article and each section, and that's something that we've been doing and will continue to do at the direction of council.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any questions at all for me, or I'll just sit back and listen now? Is that what?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
And make sure we're making notes, so we can...
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And I think the point there was a good one, and doing a lot of rules and ordinances, rules at the state level and ordinance locally, the devil is in the detail. One of the things this document says is the pictures and the graphs don't count, it's the words that matter. And so really, each of you taking the time to read the words to the best of your ability, the things you have an interest in. You don't have to all read everything and all that detail, but the words do matter, and one and or make a huge difference. And it could be a typo, or it could be intentional, but you guys really need to understand how some of these things do. And just like I said, some things are required, and some of the changes we're making, you do have options for. So that's one of the things we want to make sure you can understand, too, in a 330-page document. So with that, kind of open it up to initial reaction, if we can, Mr. Mayor, maybe Commissioner Bond, did you have, want to start us out in the round-robin here?
And I've spoken to two or three council members over the weekend, and after watching the Planning Board meeting last Monday night, it struck me that we need to reestablish that Board of Adjustments. Because once that developer was turned down, his recourse at the time was to go back before the Board of Adjustments, which is being acted on now by the Planning Board. It was really, you knew where it was going. They need a better appeal process. And with the waiver versus variances coming on, I know there's some variances that's going to stay in this 160D, I know that. And there's going to be a lot more variances heard. My opinion is, and my choice would be to reestablish the Board of Adjustments, a different Board of Adjustments other than the Planning Board. So they could have an appeal process heard by a different group of people. That's the only thing that I've got weighing on me right now at the moment.
Very good. Anyone else, Mr. Granis?
First of all, I want to thank Samantha for taking the time out today with me. It was very informative. I did have a number of questions. Probably the takeaway for me today was that I clearly understand that 160D is, that's the law, and we cannot deviate from that piece of 160D. However, there are, in the content of 160D, there are also ordinances that are referenced, and some ordinances are left alone, some ordinances are being modified, and I believe, well, I'm not going to say that there are new ordinances incorporated, but one of the concerns I have... but the, one of the concerns I had about my perception of the ordinance changes was that, wanted to be really clear that I understood what, what they were for and what they meant. And I, I think I, I learned a lot today, which was good. Probably the most compelling piece did focus around access to subdivisions with respect to that particular area of 160D as well as our ordinances. And there was some verbiage put in there that, that I think it was actually called findings, not findings of fact, but findings. And my interpretation of that was, why are we doing that? And why couldn't we just stick to 155, I believe, 706, if memory serves me right, and let it go at that? And I found other ordinances that had verbiage that related to that sort of thing, not a lot, but some. And I think it's, I think it's good that we will be getting a, what I'm going to call a line item change, if you will, to go over. And I do think it's needed. As our consultant mentioned, you know, this, this is big. This is, hasn't happened in almost 20 years. And it, I think it's important enough that we don't want to rush it, only to have to come back and make changes to the ordinance pieces of this to the best of our ability. The other thing is, is I do agree that, that we need to reevaluate the planning board, also sitting as the Board of Adjustments. I, I feel that there could be potential conflict there. And I think we would all agree that we're going to see a lot of variances, which would go to the Board of Adjustment. And for that reason, I think it would be, I think it would be responsible of us to seriously consider having a separate board.
All right. Anyone else?
Do you need a motion to reestablish the Board of Adjustment as a separate board?
I think we would need your consensus, though. We've carefully has prepared some, some information from you for what that is from Article 22, 32, I believe. I would like to have direction so that we can bring you back a package of what that would look like. I mean, we think it's going to look a lot like it did before, but if you'll give us direction, I don't know if that needs to be a motion or not, but it probably should be a motion to direct us to, to bring you back a separate Board of Adjustment.
I'll make a motion that we reestablish our Board of Adjustment as a separate board for review.
We have a motion and a second to reestablish the Board of Adjustment. Is there any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lock sign. Motion carries.
I guess for the benefit of staff, does any other councilman have anything specific they'd like for us to, to look at? Point other than bringing you back the list of things that we started reviewing today and, and just bring you back that updated list to the next working session? Is there anything further or more specific than that?
Just the big changes in the ordinances that don't really, that's not mandated. I'd like to see that because what's mandated, we've got to do.
The, I'm not going to go into detail, but there was, there was a lot of interaction between myself and Samantha, as well as our town manager, talking about things that needed to be rediscussed and/or reconsidered in those. I don't know that we need to go into that at this time, but I, I think that's going to be beneficial for us. And I mean, I don't want to imply that there's only one, two, or three things. There are many things, a multitude of things. And I, I just appreciate the willingness to, to take a look at that. I think it's very important.
And let me add, we met, after you met today with Samantha, I had my list of things that I had from, from your all's direction for me to take a deeper dive, and we had a very detailed conversation, two different meetings with Samantha, me, Rich, and Joshua to go over, you know, some of that information. And I think they were very productive, and I think on some things Samantha was able to explain them away, or Rich, and other things we weren't. So, I'm, I'm with you that we need to go back and review that again. I know Samantha's got her notes, and we'll go back through that and bring that, that to you guys.
Mr. Holder?
I think it's important that when we do pass this, we don't have to go back in 60 days and relook at it. When we look at it the next time, we need to see what ordinances have to be updated. We need to see what information we can act on. We do not need findings that are not findings of fact.
All right. Anyone else? All right. If not, then we'll, I'll entertain a motion to continue this item to the February 15th. Is that?
Yes. Unless you, unless you want a special meeting to do it next week, or do you want to continue it to the 15th?
So, I'm going to put that in your court because if you feel like that we're going to be needing some couple of hours for discussion and educational process, then I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, let's continue it to the 15th for now. Can we call a special meeting if we get to it and want to do it sooner so that you can fully pass it on the 15th? We need a work session.
Yeah. I'm good. Are you guys good with a work session if you need one?
Yep.
Yes.
Let us take our notes over the next day or two and decide, but we'll, we'll decide by Wednesday.
That's fine.
Whether we think we need one maybe next week so we can pass it on the 14th. We're not, we're not in a complete hurry, but I know there's several applications out there that would like to get in the queue and, and use the options under 160D if possible. So, we want to be diligent and complete. We don't want to have to change in a 60-day like Councilman Holder says, but we also don't want to unusually delay anybody if we can, if we can get through the heart of the matter quicker, I think, so.
Motion to move to the 15th.
Second.
We'll have a motion to continue this to the 15th. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lock sign. Motion carries. Up next is the update to the comprehensive list of fees and charges.
That needs to be continued as well as part of that motion if it wasn't.
Yes, sir. I would come up and say please, can, we would request that's continued until the next meeting as well.
Awesome. Questions or comments for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to continue that to the February 15th meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lock sign. Motion carries. All right. Up next, under Old Business, is the creation of position of Assistant Town Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rich Capola, Deputy Town Manager. This is an item that was discussed as part of the previous budget and deferred with the intent of including it in this next FY22 request. Based on some of the upcoming activity we've got going on, particularly with some of these larger developments moving into the summer here, we'd like to go ahead and try to front-load the recruitment for this position and try to get them online as soon as possible. The, the request would essentially, by the time we actually got it filled this year, we feel like we would be able to fill the, or excuse me, fund the project through lap salary that we currently have within the Public Services Department. So, the net impact this year, we don't expect to be more than most already allocated.
Awesome. Questions or comments? All right. If not, Mr. Granis?
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Assistant Town Engineer position. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lock sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is the wastewater allocation update.
Me again. So, I think the last one of these updates that we had done for, for the council was back in July. Since then, our current flow numbers in terms of availability with regard to wastewater are approximately 600,000 gallons per day of available allocation to still allocate towards projects. It's down about 100,000 gallons from the previous report I gave you back in July. Normal growth, as well as some seasonally high rainfalls skew that number slightly, but essentially, right now, based on the, the improvement, excuse me, the approvals that we have since then, we have approximately 600,000 gallons to allocate to future projects. The reason that number probably hasn't changed all that much is frankly, we have not approved many projects in the last six months or so that had large demands for wastewater. However, in advance of a few other developments that are coming for you here, we did want to do this update and let you know where we stand currently. Those larger developments, as part of the attorney's presentations earlier, you may have heard them say that you have the ability to include certain conditions or otherwise. So, as part of that negotiation or development of those agreements, we've been looking at their demands and when there's, when, when their different phases would actually come online within those developments and lining those up to ensure that we are only giving them the amount of allocation they need for those different, different developments to, or excuse me, those different phases to come online. Additionally, the size of those developments, their development schedules go well beyond when we anticipate the new project to be in place. So, in the short term, we will be looking very diligently about how much, or how many, how many gallons we do give them for each of their first, you know, the first couple phases. That becomes a little bit less of a immediate need or an immediate issue for us once the new plant's online. So, that's kind of the, the state of the union where we're at with current development, or excuse me, current wastewater allocation availability. Happy to answer any questions.
Rich, just a question. During these rainy seasons, how much does this rainwater affect our capacity?
So, again, the way we have to allocate, calculate our capacity, I think the engineer to me can get real deep in the details here, but obviously, the more rain we have, the more rain goes through the system. It increases our numbers, just the, the overall average flow that are going through there. So, it can increase, you know, in, you know, at Little Creek, for instance, it can increase at 10 to 20%, just depending on, you know, how much rainfall we've had as of late. It's been a little bit high just because of the amount of rainfall, but those numbers have not, aren't going to, you know, one month or two months of high rainfall aren't going to skew the overall year too, too much.
You'll be able to adjust once it dries up, basically, right?
There, there is some variability there. So, that's where, you know, in the past, where a number may have been, you know, at one level, if, if we went six months without any rain or through a dry spear, dry spell, it may have come, seemed like it came down, but really, it's just adjusting for those, those drier weathers or rainy weathers in another direction.
Mr. Granis?
Rich, have, has, have any of the approved developments gone beyond the statute of limitations as far as wastewater commitments, sewer commitments that have actually gone back into that 600,000?
So, whenever we reconcile, we do go back to look and see what, sorry. Whenever we reconcile the spreadsheet overall, we do, we do go back and look at what's been developed to date so that we are deducting what is tributary flow and not planned or paper flow. But also, we are looking at, on the list of development projects as either they close out or, to your point, we haven't had any of them as of late go beyond what was either a vested right or, or an allocated amount for, for the period of time that they're in. So, we are reconciling that on a regular basis. Pretty much every time a new development project has to go to the state for permitting, it automatically gets updated.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I don't think I'm next.
JD has a presentation.
Will it work?
I can do it. Yeah. If y'all got it, I got it. Okay, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm in another position here.
You ready? Yes, sir. Up next on the agenda is the wastewater reclamation facility program update.
Okay. We, you guys have seen a lot of this because we modified the EA and we did a public presentation, I believe, last December, November, December as part of that approval process. I wanted to give you an update on this because we have good news that we've got our finding of no significant impact, and we've got our NPDS permit adjustment approved. It's all technical stuff on the compliance side. We were also back in front of the local government commission last Friday to update them and to make sure we're on the right direction as we go forward with financing. And then, today, we also had a meeting with our design build interested parties in proposing on the project to, to build the actual plant. So, it seemed like a time we appoint to give you basically the presentation we did to the LGC last Friday. Okay. Low battery here. Let's go this way. Will that go off? That little thing in the bottom right corner? It went off somehow. Okay. So, this is a slide you guys know about. I like to continue to give it to the public and for outside people, but that is our sprawling city, growing city of Clayton, and in it is the research and training zone. You guys are well familiar with that. So, a lot of big things in Clayton, and what I like to tell people, even though we're a community of only 25,000, we're kind of playing in the 75,000 to 100,000 fighting weight right now as we go out and do our business. Of course, with the research and training zone, one thing that we know, we've got major industries there. We've got more than two, but in recent years, two have both invested more than $2 billion apiece in the RTZ. So, with all of our RTC providers, we look for our water and sewer rates to be paid for. We don't subsidize that, and we don't get any tax base from those industries in the RTZ. And so, when we look at financial programs and growth, we have to rely on our rates and our financing programs to be able to support that type of growth and their expansion needs. Right now, and I think that's clear in the environmental documents, Grifols and Novo, between them make up about 30% of our wastewater flows. We expect in the next 10 years that they'll probably be making up close to 50% of those flows. So, we're blessed by having two big entities. We're also challenged by that because that is a fair percentage to keep up with. A couple of things I wanted to give the LGC because we, we have had some stuff in the media lately, and, and we had not been in front of them for a presentation like this probably since the fall, but two things I'll point out to them, they will have probably seen things regarding our COVID-related issues in the fire department and the tragedies that happened there. They will also probably see backdating back to September, our problems and the issues currently related to the police department and some of those things that are still in the news. I reminded them that they probably saw some things in it about the town manager, which was me, which they knew, but that, that issue had been resolved. So, as you guys know, with institutions of loaning money and, and doing banking, they like stability, and so, it was very important to, to kind of give them a little bit of explanation of what we've seen in the journey we've been on the past probably six months in the media. The other thing I told them was the good news of Clayton, which again, we want to talk about from a financial perspective, but our sales tax revenues continue to be up 15 to 20% over last year, month in and month out. We continue to break records. We also have got expenses that are also moving up, which is the potable water and the wastewater's allocations are dwindling, so, so we've got pressure there. Our bulky waste, as you guys know, has also gone up about 15 to 20%, and we've mitigated that, which, which financial folks like to hear, but we continue to have to monitor that, whether that's permanent or not, given our growth. Our building permits and inspections are up over last year, and that varies by percentage with the category you look at it. And then, there's a number of projects that are coming in. Two there at the bottom, we said, three major mixed-use developments, two which will be coming in shortly, needing hundreds of thousands of gallons of wastewater each. We've got the Ranch Road widening project that's been approved by DOT that'll start getting right away next month, that will open up that corridor. We've got a couple of other projects like in Goodwill and Life Dust that are coming, and our infill is booming. And so, one of the messages I gave the LGC, if you see the blue line in that bottom right picture, that's that NC 42 and Ranch Road widening. So, that really provides connectivity into 42 to bring it around to what we will know as the bypass, but everybody else calls US 70 now. But also, those other industries you see in green stars and stars, just the, the amount of growth that's going to really happen in that southern, southwestern quadrant of Clayton over the next few years that's on the books coming up. So, we believe in many ways that, that regardless of this first phase, you've heard me say that before, and I will get ahead of myself a little bit, but I'm not as worried about that before, and I will get ahead of myself a little bit, but I'm not as worried about the first 6 million gallons. We're already flowing a little over 4 million gallons now. And by the time, we will get to 6 million gallons during the life of those loans. I'm not too worried about that. I probably should be, but it's really going to 10 million gallons, which is where the rubber's going to meet the road. So I think from a financial perspective, we'll, we'll not have any trouble finishing off the six when we get it built. Some things that I have told the financial people, the LGC, that we wanted to do to make sure we're right in our numbers. The first thing is we've updated our water and wastewater projections, and that may sound like an odd thing to do while you're trying to get things approved, but we need to make sure we have the right number, and we've done that. We hired an independent consultant to do that, HDR. And what they did, really the driver of this was we've got some smaller areas. You see those green basins? That's where some of our growth is starting to happen. That's out near the Lumen project and the Ranch Road widening project. So we're really trying to get a handle on how big those pump stations and line connections need to be, and that's really why we had to do this. But while they were there looking at that area, we went ahead and did it for the whole town so that we knew the overall numbers were right and their numbers basically confirmed and actually said they were going to be higher, our growth numbers, than what we had originally projected. So they're already getting out of date on the growth numbers. We also, as you guys know, we started aggressive utility collections in September of 2020. Anne Game and her staff have done just a simply phenomenal job and probably some of the best numbers in the state from a financial recovery standpoint and not using, losing our utility funds where you see a lot of cities having to look for grants or for money from the federal government or whatnot to be passed through. We've done a really good job of taking care of our finances. We've also updated our general fund, CIP, forecasts because it is one system of money, whether it be our electric, water, wastewater, or our general fund, and we want to know where we are at that for overall town spending. And finally, as you guys know, we also did a detailed mid-year review of the budget so that we could tell folks that part that we're ahead of budget and not behind budget as we get ready to do this major project. So those were kind of the financial information and some of the updates I gave the LGC. We went ahead and renewed the outline of the project, which this council knows very well. But again, the pipeline in the top left where we're taking Little Creek, the existing facility and pumping it to the top right, where our new facility will be. The other project is the ECIA pump station you see in yellow that'll also go to the new site. We have, as we said before, to minimize our costs and to live within our means, a couple of things we've done is we've right-sized the plant to where we will not build the full 10 in MGD, but really, really build six that we can afford at this point. And then we're going to keep our relationships with Johnston County and Raleigh for emergencies or other short-term needs. So those are all sources of way that we've done our very, very best to minimize the cost of the project. I'll also add that we've picked a site where we don't have any direct impacts so we can spend as much money as possible on actually construction than we do in mitigating environmental conditions and whatnot. So that's another good positive. So I'm not going to read these. I've shared these with you before, but these are our progress through date through May of 2020, and they're in the record. Kathy's got them on the website. This is through June 15th of 2020. And then finally, some of the things I've already talked about was some of the good progress through January 15th of 2021, and I'll let you read those. Down on the phases, you can see the four phases. Those are the same phases that are in the environmental documents, and we're going to keep those throughout construction in the way we think about the project. And you can see the path there, where we're at in percent complete. Our critical path will be to our agreement with the major industries and to work with LGC to make sure that all the construction phase barring will be approved by them. Again, we have identified all the funding. We know it's there. We're really choosing which is the best loan rates to pay, but in North Carolina, we have a second level of approval, which is the local government commission. And part of working with them is to make sure they know the financial condition we're in because there are a lot of communities across the state that are struggling, and we want to make sure that they understand that our position is, is different than many, probably different than most in the state to the positive. This is important really from a financial perspective, and I just want to kind of make sure you guys see this because this is not something I talk about in the public much as we've kind of got the project approved at this point. But some of the things that are important from a financial standpoint are we, you guys did put our, council did put our new rates in effect, and that's a very important signal to the lending agencies and the LGC. We have had no COVID-related impacts on the utility funds or the general fund because of our aggressive collections. We did the third-party review. We have begun an assessment and fine-tuning of our service areas with Johnston County. So we're making sure we know what's in and outside our territory or our boundaries. And then we've done a string of things with cash flow analysis and rate and fee models with Davenport, Blackin Beach, and Maguire Woods, who are essentially our financial team. And we've also at the end with Colley, Prejean, and Parker Poe with Russell Killian, who's still working on the project. We've also looked at our contracts and our updated procurement provisions, which you guys approved at last meeting, to make sure all the things from a contractual, legal, and financial standpoint are all in place. And so again, I think we're doing a great job with, with the things that we're doing right now. And as final comment here that you've seen before in this quarterly presentation, but we have looked at risk. We've mitigated a number of risks already, but we have identified, as we always do every quarter, what are our primary risks as we move through the project with, with people. So those things are all in place. I will say finally, as I finish, overall, the project to this phase is on or under budget. I think we're actually a little under budget. We're about two months behind where I would like to be in the schedule, but I'm reminded there's always early starts and late starts. And a lot of this is in the band of being able to complete on time, but, but you need to save every month you can upfront, and, and I don't think we're behind at this point, but I would like to be a little further ahead on schedule. But, but we're making it through and so far, things, things are going about where we need them to go. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll open it up for questions if anybody has any.
All right. Questions or comments?
Good job.
Yeah, thank you. Great update. All right. Up next, under new business is the special rescue operation partnership with Archery Lodge Fire Department and Cleveland Fire Department.
Saying the best for us. Mayor, Council, Deputy Chief, Matt Sutcliffe, Clayton Fire Department. This is more disinformational about an idea we've had for the past couple of years, timing's everything. As you know, since the mid to late 90s, we've been doing special rescue operations. The more Clayton grows, the more risk we have every day, there's confined space, there's trench, I mean, not calls we go to, but every day there's open trenches, confined space. So the potential's there. So these calls, we call high-risk, low-frequency. You know, they're very high-risk, but we don't go to them a lot. But when we do, it takes a lot of manpower and a lot of time on scene. And you know, it becomes a balancing act trying to balance everyday calls and manage this scene at the same time. So we all use mutual aid to help with that. So our plan is with Archery Lodge in Cleveland, they already do some special rescue operations. They have equipment available. We would like to create a partnership with them to create one large team that would serve all our communities better in the long run and take some of the financial burden off each department. So I mean, really, you know, this covers swift water, rescue, trench, confined space, high angles, cell towers, not one entity, it's all of them. So we're in the ground, you know, ground phase, building a foundation. We have a committee made up of different members of each department. They're working on SOGs, you know, inventory list of equipment, what we may or may not have already. So it's in the very beginning, but we just wanted to inform y'all what we're working on and kind of get y'all's blessing to move forward. Long-term goals, we would love to get on the state deployment swift water team, which means, you know, if we have a lot going on here during a hurricane or something, we will not deploy. We do not have to, but if our town's safe, we have the option of being deployed to other communities to help them. So obviously Clayton and our surrounding communities are going to come first, but what this does is it opens up opportunities for additional training that we don't always have access to and other grant opportunities for funding. So that being said, I'll answer any questions you may have, but again, this is ground floor. Once we get it outlined more, we'll bring back the whole packet to you and kind of explain to where we're at.
Awesome. Questions or comments? Mr. Thompson?
I think this is a good idea. I think regionalization is a big thing in a lot of areas, but I think public safety especially. Regionalization's important because we can combine a lot of resources to accomplish a common goal and, and it helps our neighbors. And when people see, when people, when the fire truck or ambulance pulls up at their house, they don't care what's written on the side of it. They just want to know the competent, well-trained people come to help. And I think that's, that's something that we've always strived for in Clayton and will continue to, to always bring the right people to the right situation. I also think it's being a good steward of the taxpayers' money. I think we see unfortunately in a lot of communities, do we necessarily need heavy rescue trucks in every single district? Do we necessarily need certain specialty equipment in every single area? It's such a duplication when, when we could really combine our resources, combine our people, combine the equipment. And I think that's being a good steward of the taxpayers' money because I don't think taxpayers should be paying for things that sit. They need to be paying for things that are put to good use. And I think by regionalizing, that's one way to do that. Thank you.
You're right. They don't care what the name of the truck is. You know, our surrounding departments, they operate like we do. We train with them already. We run calls with them. So we already mesh together. It's going to go smoothly, and I think it's going to offer a better service. You know, it's hard to get a win-win-win situation, and I think this is going to be three wins for all our communities. So.
Awesome. Anyone else? Mr. Granis?
I want to echo the mayor pro temp sentiments. I really believe this is a great idea and for the very reasons that you've expressed, to have the opportunity to be able to do that, I think is, is truly a benefit to our citizens, but not only ours, but the benefit as well for the Cleveland folks and Archery Lodge folks as well. So I think this is really great.
And like I say, you know, when you get a bad hurricane, you may get multiple flood incidents. Currently, right now, we have, you know, a motorized boat and a blow-up boat. Well, you know, they get called out. In the end, goal, these other departments will have the same resources we have and be able to come assist and vice versa to them. So having that regionalized team that trains together, messes together, it's just going to be a good thing for all of us.
You had me at grant. You know, that's my favorite word. So thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Great job. All right. Now we'll jump on down to staff reports, beginning with the manager.
Yeah, I've got a big call out tonight, really big call out. You guys know we had a major manhole closed on Main Street the other day. We've had a plate out there that's where people complain. We had a trench first that people complained about, then we got a plate out there and the plate's going to have to stay for a while. But basically the manhole, everything around the manhole there on Main Street's starting to collapse and fall in. But last week, we had a crew come out for a day, and I'll just tell you, on the back truck was Stephen Norris and Christian Holder. On the camera crew was Dylan Carroll and Donnie Baker. Of course, James Blaylock led this, and James Blaylock was in the hole most of the time. Hurios Sanchez was helping him and Chris Deed was back working on tasks while the rest of these guys, keeping it going while these guys are all assessing the manhole. Rusty was out there with his crew, Robbie Russell, Mark Brennan, Russell Yolan, Ray Rhodes, Joey Faison, and Kenny Hales, all to keep it going smooth and fast. This was the day it snowed. And then from the police department, Tim Markey and Tim Mim stayed there with them. One stayed most of the day and one stayed there all day. So the police department was there supporting our staff in the road, doing the work, the hard work in the camera hole and the sewer hole. I like it from James Blaylock when he sent the thank you over to the police department. He said, different uniforms, one team. And it really was. It was a great thing to watch. It was a great thing to be part of when I was out there, and we really, really had a lot of great field people out there, a lot of great people in the field actually doing, doing a really hard job on a snowy day in a sewer. So yes.
What you going to do to fix it, though? It's still there.
It is, it is, it is, it is, and it's a harder decision. So let me get to that. Because the system is almost 100 years old running down Main Street, it's made out of vitrified clay pipe. Most of you know that it's terracotta pipe. It's got four-foot segments on it. The joints aren't very good. It runs 600 feet down the hill from where Main Street and Lombard cross down toward the bottom down there, probably Michael near the Morning Glory if you went across the road. Most modern manholes are 400 feet apart. There's not even equipment now that'll clean the whole distance, the whole 650 feet. And so we're probably going to have to put a manhole in so that we can work on the other manhole further downstream, like an intermediate manhole, maybe 100 or 100 feet up, and then we're going to have to dig all of that road out to make sure that the ground doesn't keep sinking. What we found was the old masonry manhole, and we're still studying, but Kathy has the video, it's just pouring groundwater, inflow and infiltration in the side of the manhole. And what's that's done is put a lot of debris in there that's mixed with some grease that is any sewer system, so it keeps plugging up. And the more it plugs up, the more pressure it puts, the worse it makes it. So it's flowing in, it's plugging it up, then it's building hydrostatic pressure before it flows downhill in the sewer line. And so there's, there's several options. We'll bring you back a business case. I'm encouraging our staff, they can do the work themselves, but it may be one of those things, we want to go to outside contractors with different equipment and maybe some inline repair that will be cheaper. But it won't be quicker. We can Band-Aid it like we always probably do, but, but it really begs for a little bit bigger solution, but that'll close down Main Street when we do it for some period of time. So much more to come, but our guys did a great job assessing it, and I was really pleased with how fast they got in and out. Want to give another call out to, to Matt and the team, Lee's here too. I mean, we announced to you guys back probably a month ago, we were going to do an emergency management team, and we moved Amy over. We are hard at work at that, getting that in place. We have not fiddled around with it, and so I think our emergency response between, that combines everybody in town, all the departments for things we do, but also coordinating between police and fire, that's really getting off the ground and running well. So I thank both Matt and Lee and Amy for that. Greg Tark continues to make good progress at the police department. I think we're updating some standards. We're updating some of the policies and procedures. We've got our guys kind of gelling, so I'm happy with that. We've made some, added some vehicles and some other things, so I think that's running well. And then the last thing I'll say is I got to attend with Avery. The mayor couldn't be on the call, although he should have been, but we had our sculpture selection the other day, right? And I know the mayor's waiting. We've got some really great sculptures that we've picked for this year for the Sculpture Trail, and I'll let Avery and the mayor talk about that a little bit, but as we said when we got here, we weren't going to cut that from the budget, and I think you guys are going to probably be really impressed, Mr. Mayor, with some of the sculptures that were picked. I think you'll agree with that. So that, that got done as on, as on schedule. So, all right, well, you'll have something to add to, Avery. So I'll be quiet with that. That's all I've got, and be glad to take any questions.
How long are we going to continue to have the steel plate on Front Street?
Say that one more time?
The steel, the steel plate on Front Street at Church Street. How long are we going to continue to have that?
It is on my list because you're not the first person to ask me that now that we put another steel plate down, and I can't tell you that tonight, but we will, we will huddle up with that and get you a better answer unless Rich knows right now. Erase your hand, Rich.
I was going to say, that's another one that has a little bit more in-depth fix that we're looking to, we actually have an engineer looking at it because it's not just storm drains, there's water and sewer all in that area that have to be adjusted to be able to fix that. So I'll have to get an update as to where we're at with the design on that, but again, that's another, as opposed to a Band-Aid to try to get it right one time.
Anyone else? All right. Town and Attorney?
Just a couple of comments, Mayor and Town Council. Referring back to 160D and the discussion that's underway about that, I just want to point out that that is one of several very large projects that the town has underway at the moment. And to give you some context, I look back and Chapter 160D is actually over 130 pages itself. Chapter 155 of the town code is over 150 pages itself. So the integration of those is why you've got over 300 pages in your, in your package. So we're, we're working through that, working with your staff, and Mr. Raspberry is with me tonight. So we're working through that, working with your staff. And Mr. Raspberry is with me tonight. He's going to be working with your staff more on that particular issue to try to get it in a form that suits the town's needs. Several other projects that we've been involved in, some development projects that you heard about tonight, as well as some others, some property acquisitions, police department investigation, wastewater reclamation project has got easements, financing, contracts. You're on a fast-moving train and it slowed down just long enough for us to step on. And now it's sped back up again. So I just wanted to let you know that we're involved in all of that. We're doing our best to keep up. And we really appreciate the warm welcome we've received in the last 30 days working on this, getting to know your staff. You've got a very good staff. They've been very helpful and very welcoming to us. We'll keep chipping at it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Let me add something to. I'll ask you a question too, Jim. I think when we talked about just our real estate transactions when we met, I think we were up to 14 or 15? Or is it more than that? Just the number of just real estate matters that, separate matters with you guys.
That was all we talked about that day. And then since then, you've talked about a few more.
Yeah. And we've already touched, how many of your attorneys so far probably in your law firm?
You've hit five of them so far.
Okay. Very good.
How many are left?
Two. There's two that haven't come on board yet, but they're standing by.
Good to know. We're in great hands. Thank you both. Town clerk?
No reports. Thank you, sir.
All right. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. No one wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to council for comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bob?
I keep forgetting to do this. It happened back during the summer. But as you all know, we bang our heads up against the wall a lot over the ETJ, the ordinances with the ETJ. We're only limited to what we can do in the ETJ. And nuisance enforcement is not one of them. So back during the summer, I touched base with County Commissioner Butch Lauder. And he touched base with Rick Hester, county manager. And Rick sent a letter to some of the residents in our ETJ to see if we could get some of the areas, especially in our gateway areas, cleaned up. And I drove around this weekend and looked, and they're actually working. So I'd like to give a shout out to Commissioner Butch Lauder and County Manager Rick Hester for stepping up and taking care of that for us. So that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. So just kind of talking about the art and sculpture choices that we did select. The call last, I mean, the Zoom meeting lasted at about, that's about two hours, I would say. I had to get off the last 20 minutes, so I wasn't a part of the last, like, you know, the final choices that they did make. But I think we chose three large and four small. My personal favorite was, I think it was a firehouse. I forgot what they called it, but it was like a firehouse something. I thought it would be a great tribute for our fire department. I'm really not too sure if that was one of the large choices, but I mean, I think you guys are going to be pretty excited when they do come out. So that's the only update I have for that.
And I'll just add to that, that the Public Art Advisory Board will be here on the 15th to make a presentation and show everything, all the finalists that were selected.
Awesome. Yeah, y'all better bring y'all sleeping bag on February the 15th because we're going to be here for a very long time. Okay? Plenty of coffee. All right. No, it was great. And I'm sorry I couldn't be a part of that. JD mentioned I wasn't able to join for that selection process. And it was unfortunate because just to give you a little insider, it's the most and the best submittals we've ever had since we started doing this. And I'm so glad I didn't have to choose because it would have made you pull your hair out. So great job to you and to the Public Art Advisory Board. We'll look forward to their presentation at the next meeting. All right. Anything else to come before this council? I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. Second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Please, good night.